Public discussion on any item on this agenda don't look like we've got a lot of public here.
No.
Okay, let's go with the minutes.
I'm not gonna gain any weight. I'm not gonna gain any weight. I'm not picky either. Marvin, did you hear Marvin?
No, I just moved there for a reason.
Oh, I thought I needed a little help here. They were my favorite.
My son-in-law was opening Lyle's stocking and that's what I had still put candy in Lyle's stocking. So, Landon got Lyle's candy because he said, "Oh, he can't have his." Which he can.
Yeah, Kaylee came and gave their mother a diaper for Christmas. Wrapped it up in a big box and had a diaper. Oh, they go, "Oh, you know what?" I said, "Kids, why'd you give your mother a diaper?" "We thought it was funny." And I said, "Because she's a shits." And my grandson said, "Papa, you don't say words like that in this house."
Christmas ham.
No, you won't tell me. I'm gonna do it now. After that, I'll make a motion on the minutes.
Say it all in favor?
Aye.
You're all in.
Give me all the warrants for paper. Soapstone Marvin, man, you can't keep that stuff around. I can't.
Nope, every time I go to do something, I can't find any.
Yeah, that's why I always carry my own in my pocket because I can't ever find any where I need it.
Oh, you can't find it in my own shop. It's here and I'm the only one that uses it.
You have a sign of that.
Memory.
Memory of that.
Definitely. Where did I get that from? Can't find anything in my shop. Wish there was somebody I could blame. When I've started just getting somebody to do with me, so I have somebody to blame.
But as you told me this morning, they're moving to a different house. She said, "You can't believe the stuff we've been looking for for a long time." I said, "Well, you really didn't need it then, did you?"
Yeah.
Get a dumpster pit for it.
Tell them, the guy needs to move every three years. Unless you got a wife like mine. She doesn't keep anything around you don't need. I love it.
Oh, you better be careful.
Oh, you better be. You better be careful.
You know, come to think of it, that might be a real problem.
Yeah.
That is a real problem. That might just be a sign.
She was getting out of her warts.
Yeah, we're gonna get rid of Bankin' Down.
It's what I've been hearing. I don't know if it's a done deal yet or not, but I hope so. So, you're gonna have something in that building.
They, uh, they'd ask Larry to run the bank. It's more easier at Gateway.
Really?
Yeah.
It has hurt though. But there's those several that quit from there that we're gonna work on.
Gateway lost ten employees that left there. Now, I don't think that makes it gonna be open much longer. Nick Warner told me down the hill in, "All they want's corporate loans."
Yeah.
Hello? Yeah. Well, he's gonna have to wait. We're in a county commissioner meeting right now. No, yeah. Sure. Okay, see ya. Bye. Yeah, that's not gonna work very well. Farm-oriented banks are just wanting corporate loans.
There you are, Marvin. Oh, hell, this is one for me. I can't be smart enough.
No, that's Marvin.
Oh.
District, district needs.
Yeah, oh, highway district too, though.
Yeah. So, you need a sign up there.
You need a sign up there.
We have 26.
All good.
Didn't even have to look. Is she sure it came with all? You sure it came with all? She told me to be sure it was started. I'll have it started.
I believe we stepped down and I want your banking.
Second.
All the banking. Thank you for your orders.
Top one, you don't need the sign. Top two, three, you don't need the sign. They're the sheriffs. The rest of them are ambulance district and general.
Top three.
Thank you.
What do you want me to sign it or sign up to dog?
Sheriff, you don't sign. Top three, you don't sign.
You don't?
Yeah.
All right. Mayhem ring.
Yeah, there's all.
Mayhem ring.
That's the size.
She's signed. No, it says top three, don't sign, that's sure. Was there still one? You signed one?
Yeah.
I think I got four more on here. I'm getting one, thank you. We're all made for one, I guarantee.
You know, like I said, I didn't mean to be all.
I was getting dangerous.
Lot of supplies.
I suppose you can come here the whole week and got one thing.
This has to be a member. Isn't it? Four thousand dollars. Oh, it's a PTO.
It's for the commissioner meeting, man, it's chaotic.
Pretty much a bit of it.
Does it really?
Yep.
And you gotta do it. That's the bad thing about it.
I didn't realize that. Cow will be yellow eat pretty well, huh? Oh, that's for the advertising.
No, it's for our minutes.
For a minute and everything.
Yeah.
More meeting and all that.
Yeah, all that's gotta go.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
I tell him how many times we support your paper more than anybody on the period.
Yeah. That's quite a bit of print.
That's why I kinda, you know, like when we ran our holiday thing, it was only a hundred and sixty-five dollars. But still, a hundred and sixty-five dollars and we pay up pretty close to four thousand dollars a month.
Yeah.
But.
Turn it up, yeah. That keeps the newspaper.
I believe we stepped the blanket.
Second.
All the way. River or road crossing, not river.
River crossing.
God. Can I borrow some money from you?
That one don't have an amount on it.
No, it doesn't have an amount on it.
It's five hundred, it's a warrant. It's a warrant.
That is on the south highway. That's where I saw it.
Yeah, that one's south. That one, that one is. It's harder to tell. It has to be south to the same. And then south.
Still got two regions running over there, huh?
And then you start another, three, four.
Yeah, yeah.
Check out the other one up on Christmas Eve fast. The regular song.
I think right on the highway.
Yes, it is.
He can run by, see if it's got smaller or.
Wow. I believe we stepped your own.
Second.
All in favor?
Oh, you have to hear.
Resolution for 2020 calorie.
Okay, this is that resolution that Dale suggested we put through. And then he says, "Every one of your safety-sensitive employees needs to fill out this bottom." So, they are aware. So, I mean, you guys need to read this and make sure you want it stated that way. Um, this is what he suggested. I sent it to him. He said, "Yep, can't get much clearer than that." So, I sent it to you guys. I don't know whether you guys have got to read it ahead of time or not.
Yeah, I did. I don't know whether you guys read it. I don't know how you change anything on it.
It's pretty black and white on that bottom part. If they sign that, you guys keep a copy of it, send the original up to me. I put it in their personnel file. So, you guys have a copy of it. We have an original. If they are tested positive, it doesn't matter if they have medical marijuana card or not. They are terminated.
Right. Naturally, if they got a CDL, they won't have a medical marijuana card.
Or a fire alarm license, right?
Yeah, or a.
Hell, yeah.
Well, I was talking to her this morning, you know. We got a two-cent sales tax in this county and these dispensaries aren't paying a nickel in tax. We need to check into starting forcing that because unless there's some exemption signed in some of that medical marijuana that I'm not aware of.
The problem is, is it's federal. The federal won't mess with the money. They can't use a bank.
No, no, that's right.
So, you don't, it's all cash.
But still, they need to be accountable, have accountability to their bookkeeping of some sort.
Well, they passed it without taking all that through.
I know, but.
So, until it's papered, you know, you're not gonna know how much. It's all cash money.
Well, sure it is. And like the two dispensaries at Winoco over there a few months back, they showed a total sale and both dispensaries are six hundred bucks a month. Randy with Murphy said, "You gotta be kidding me." Six hundred dollars a dollar.
They're down to now, yeah.
Yeah. I believe we stepped a resolution for safety-sensitive.
All right.
God, yeah.
I'll try to get these out for you guys for Monday. Um, the handbook and then a copy of this drug policy. And then I'll give you a spreadsheet with each one of your employees where you can show where they've signed both places in there.
What do you do if they refuse to sign?
That's automatic termination. That's what it says right in this policy. If they refuse to sign it, adios. And from now on, we're not gonna do this. We're just, if we revise page eight here.
It's gonna be the same way also.
We're gonna save a lot of trees.
Thank you for bringing that up also.
So. All right then.
But I mean, and I'll have this resolution attached to that for our new hires also. But you guys are gonna have to tell me whether they're safety-sensitive or not as they come in. If they're not, then I'll just remove that. But if they are, then they'll have to sign this also. So, as your, as your hires.
Every one of the employees up there is gonna be safety-sensitive. Well, the same way with both of you guys. I mean, they ever drive a county vehicle.
I make a motion.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. 2020 agreed by after the meeting schedule.
We changed that to that second Monday of the month. That's what they talked about in the meeting. Is that still all right with everyone? Or do you wanna leave it the first Monday? Because we talked about it in the meeting, changing it to the second Monday at one o'clock. So, if that's the case, then I had to do a new calendar.
I don't know. I wouldn't add that part of the meeting again.
Uh, it was, it was later in the meeting. Tammy requested it because she has a luncheon every first Monday of the month for church.
The monkey deal is that I can do all our courthouse on the same day.
Well, it's still, it's still Monday. Yeah.
Second.
Yeah, the second Monday of the month.
Well, I seen no real.
Yeah, it was changing from the first Monday to the second Monday, so at one o'clock. It's the first Monday. Our meetings are pretty crazy also. But I mean, this is one of them for you guys.
Do that. All in favor? Aye.
But I'd already sent those into the states, so I had to revise that.
I hope everybody wrote that in my calendar.
You gotta sign it there, sunny boy.
Memory.
Memory, attaboy.
I was just gonna pass it on.
Pass it on.
Here, you sign it.
Which restaurant do you wanna go to?
Yeah, I don't remember.
I don't remember.
Attaboy. 2020 revised payroll due date.
There was two on here and I'm sorry, I have slept since then. I think it was October and one other month that that Monday fell and I wasn't even paying attention until I was writing all mine in the new calendar. Like, "Oh, crap, we gotta revise that." So, there was two on there and I said, "I don't remember which two it was" that we were signing them after the fact that they had to be at the bank. So, I had to bump them up a little.
I'll make a motion. Say it all in favor? Aye. Resolution in 2020 dispersal of two percent sales tax.
We just have to send a resolution through every, before every January. And the, the, the same as.
That's what we had last year with no changes.
We're gonna have Tammy.
Well, it'll be on the ballot this, in 2020.
So, we're, we're gonna, we need to redo that resolution. Next box.
Well, yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to re-sprint the whole resolution.
Yeah, it's gotta be like we want it on the ballot.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
I did.
Four, six months due.
Get my next one. Oh, sorry.
Well, I know Dad and I are gonna make step down concrete.
Um, did you tell, yeah, I called you. I called you on.
No, he told.
Okay. Um, I tried calling down there and it wasn't there. Um, we can't accept it after the fact. I mean, he was told that we would accept the bid, but we can't do that. So, we can either go out for bid again for District Three, for six-month bid concrete, or if we, once you spend fifteen thousand, then you have to bid your projects for that six months. But they did not turn it in. We rejected it.
So, can we, can we just table it till Monday? And they can get it sent to you by then?
No, we have to go out for bid on it again. The, there's a due date on our bids and they turned it in Friday, which it was due the Friday before and we had to reject it. So, we already have to.
If we go out for bids again, it'd just be for District Three?
Or, I mean, or whatever you guys wanna do.
I wanna accept.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm gonna.
Yeah, I gotta have Enid concrete.
So, do you want to go out next week then for?
Soon as possible because we got a red.
They got a red ready. And I was trying to call the auditor all week and nobody answered because the same company owns this.
I know.
And Bruce told me, he talked to him down there and he had.
Well, if they honor it for both of them, then that's a total different thing.
It's the same company.
I don't know. I totally agree.
That's why I was gonna make the motion that we accept the same company and.
So, I, I just say let Jay call the auditors.
Well, that's what I was thinking.
Will they honor that bid though? Is the, I mean.
I don't know.
It, it's not the auditors that we have a question with. If they will honor the bid at Enid, then we're fine.
The same bid as Alba?
But they're never the same.
They're not, no, you're cheaper at Enid on concrete. Your mileage is.
That's all I'm saying is that I don't wanna look this way.
Let, let, let's wait on Monday to, on that deal there.
Wait till Monday on.
And see if we can find out if, I'll talk to Bruce to see if he can accept that too. It's the same company.
Yeah, as long as it's, but they have to, they have to.
Honor Alba's.
Honor Alba's prices.
They won't.
For District Three.
Well, he will because it's more.
Well, yeah, well, yeah.
But it won't be a good benefit to District.
But, but he can sell it to you cheaper too. He can't go over the bid, but he can sell it to you cheaper.
Right.
And, and if Bruce can talk to him and say, "Okay, I'm gonna honor the bid for them." Now, they want it delivered out of Enid at the price that you sent on your quote.
But we don't know what that price is because we rejected it. We didn't open it.
You still got it?
No, I rejected it. I rejected it in the mail. We sent it back in the mail. Because we cannot accept those after the fact.
But the thing I did. But the thing of it is, he had the thing ready to put in the mail, didn't get it in the mail. That's what, that's what Bruce told me.
So.
Well, the Kenton that notarized it told me that he told him that it was already, um, expired, already past the due date.
Monday morning, we can, can he have us a bid by Monday morning? You have to go out. So Monday we'll go out and then by the next week he should have us a bid.
You gotta leave it out there for three weeks.
See, I'm gonna have to have a cement before then.
But I mean, we can call Enid, uh, Alva and ask them if they'll honor those prices. And give it to you at the price that they, but I said, we won't know what that price is. That will be something that you work out with them.
I just say you call Monday.
I'll, I'll, or I'll call Bruce and then here today in the morning, or I'll be in Alva and I'll go by and explain it to him. And I'm sure he can get a hold of it. I don't can't remember the guy's name at Enid.
So we just need to table this or nobody accept?
I, we, I move we accept the Alva concrete bid on all three districts. That way we can see how that comes from our.
Yeah, we can't accept them after, after the fact that they're due. That is a.
Okay, three bar ninety. Half inch three bars are both the same price. And the reason I wrote out the side is availability.
You're right.
Both of them.
So both, okay.
Five eight three bar was Sunbelt, cheapest. The Alvin I stay in place was the same.
It was only both?
So both of them and again availability. Painted stay in place for me twenty two days, it was a railroad yard, the only bid. Okay.
Nine and five eighths.
Yeah.
Forty seven.
Sunbelt. Only bid.
So what was the ten foot figure? Cause they priced it per.
Do what now?
On the H piling, the new H piling?
That's a question that I never get checked anything cause something's gonna be wrong.
Well, they priced it per piece and then it's per foot, I guess.
It said price per foot up here and that's, that's fifty two cents. A Sunbelt would be correct at that for foot. But the railroad yard's twenty one seventy nine.
That, that doesn't make any sense.
It doesn't. There's no, we're gonna have to, railroad yard bid it wrong.
Wrong. Railroad yard?
Well, that's the only thing I can figure. Unless they're bidding it twenty one point seventy nine cents a foot and that, they're not gonna bid it at that.
So the fifty two cents, what's that figure of for ten foot?
Well, if you get a yard.
Well, that's.
Three times ten would be, still, it doesn't add up.
That's ten inch H piling, H piling and it's fifty two cents a foot with.
That's what I'm saying. Sunbelt is at five dollars and twenty cents for ten foot.
That's what it'd be.
They did, they did, they didn't price it on, by ten foot, it's any foot. That's ten inch H.
There you go, yeah.
Oh, ten inch.
Ten inch H.
Sometimes forty, that's my forty foot, isn't it?
But that'd make it right.
Yeah.
Forty would be.
Fifty.
Two oh eight. So they're cheaper.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying is I think railroad yards actually cheaper.
No, uh, Sunbelt's cheaper.
Oh, they are?
Sunbelt's cheaper.
It'd be like two, twenty dollars and eighty cents.
Okay.
Yeah. So.
Sunbelt.
Sunbelt.
All right, twenty eighty.
Guess we can just calculate.
Yeah, when you put forty foot, that made it all make sense.
Yeah. New structural steel propane.
Fifty two cents times forty.
Like two thousand.
Twenty eight.
Yeah. So that's, we're right. Okay.
We have the same thing on it. Forty nine fifty two.
Yeah, forty nine is Sunbelt lowest bid. Uh, structural steel, used structure steel is railroad yard thirty one cents only bid. Used steel plate same both ones. Availability is where I wrote down. New steel plate four, four two five, that's Sunbelt's lowest bid. New guard rail, six seventy, Sunbelt, lowest bid. And the used guard rail is railroad yard two eighty eight, the lowest bid.
Ten gauge inner locking.
Yeah, ten gauge is, is Sunbelt.
What's reason?
Okay, well, hot over.
I got a motion.
Oh, oh, yeah, I'm, I'm, go ahead.
I'll make the motion.
All in favor? Aye. The eight hundred blade mix summer is coastal is the cheapest. Three thousand chip and seal is, is coastal, two fourteen. Uh, AC seven point five is asphalt and fuel. Yeah.
Well, wait a minute. The three thousand chip and seal, was that coastal?
Mm-hmm.
Where are you at now, Jay?
AC seven point five, it's, it's asphalt. That's the only bid. The MC thirty seventy priming base is coastal, cheapest. MC two fifty blade mix spring and fall is coastal, cheapest. And the HFE three hundred is coastal, the only bid.
CRS two.
CRS two, that's uh, ergon, cheapest. CRS two chip and seal is ergon, the cheapest. And the CRS two P chip and seal is coastal, only. The CRS. Two S is ergon, cheapest. And the CRS, CR two S chip and seal is ergon, cheapest. Drop down to the tag code, it's coastal of two oh three, the cheapest. And of course the pump charge is, you, you just whatever, you don't need to determine the cheapest there. I move we accept that in second. Hot over. All in favor? Aye. Gypsum. Clean screen number four is US gypsum. There, there again, there's a lot of difference in price there, but Martin Marietta does not have gel.
They bid one gip price.
I, I can't understand why.
I mean, I can show you that, but of course, US gypsum at five dollars, that's the cheapest. Yeah.
Three quarter crush of run is eight point seven five, the cheapest.
The gypsum.
U- US gypsum. Drop down to inch and a half crush of run, that's uh, A- ACG about junction, seven twenty five. Too much crush of run is US gypsum, eight seventy five. And two and a half crush of run is Vals Junction ACG.
Only.
Only. Four inch surge is Vals Junction ACG at ten dollars. Six inch surge is the same, well, the only bid there on, on ten dollars. Eight inch surge, same way, only bid at Vals Junction. The Fethrun rip rap is US gypsum at ten dollars, only bid. A twelve inch rip rap is Vals Junction, only bid, fourteen dollars. Two inch clean, US gypsum, the only bid again, and two and a half clean is twelve dollars.
I'll make the.
At Vals Junction.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, aye. Now, we're going with, uh, Lonston, we accept all of them from Martin Marietta cause it's the only bid. I move we accept it.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, steel pipes. Okay, fourteen by quarter is railroad yard lowest.
Just personal bid.
Oh, yeah, I, I looked the wrong line. Excuse me.
Yeah, me too.
Sixteen by quarter.
They still get the second one, huh?
Yeah, it's still the lowest. Uh, the eighteen by a quarter is Sunbelt, cheapest. And twenty two by a quarter is Sunbelt, cheapest. The twenty four by a quarter is railroad yard, cheapest. Twenty two by five sixteenths is Sunbelt, cheapest. The twenty four by five sixteenths is railroad yard, cheapest. And the thirty two by five sixteen, or the thirty by five sixteenths is railroad yard, the cheapest. Drop down to thirty six by five sixteenths is railroad yard, the cheapest. Thirty two by, or twenty four by three eighths is railroad yard, only.
If, um, Joe says something, he bid twenty six, but it's not on our bid, so I did not put it on the list. He wrote twenty six in there.
Right.
But we don't bid it, so we can't.
Lot of time, you twenty six before.
You guys would have to watch the fifteen thousand on it. If you wanna add twenty six, remind you in six months to add twenty six.
Yeah, he, he said he bid it.
Yeah, but we, we don't.
We didn't have it on the list.
We can't tabulate it then if it's not on the list?
Okay, thirty by three eighths is railroad yard, the cheapest. And forty two by three eighths is.
No, thirty six.
Oh, I skipped it, yeah. Is a Sunbelt, only. And the forty two by three eighths is Sunbelt, only. Three foot by a quarter inch is railroad yard at fifty four ninety, lowest. Four foot by a quarter is Sunbelt, lowest. Five foot by a quarter is railroad yard, only. Five foot by five sixteenths is railroad yard, only. Five foot by three eighths or better is Sunbelt, used.
These aren't used or removed, they're just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, that's cheapest. Six foot by a quarter is railroad yard, only. Six foot by three eighths or better is Sunbelt, only. And eight foot by half or better is same price on both.
Are they under that one?
Yeah, you gotta go seven foot six, three by three eighths.
Oh, yeah, only. I didn't get that marked right. Railroad yard. And the next one, the seven foot by three inch or better, it's off of railroad yard. And both on the. Eight foot by half inch.
And the rest is railroad yard. Then the rest is railroad yard only.
Right, right. Only.
I'll make the motion second.
All in favor? Aye. Greater blades. Well, I've got yellow house marked here cause they're, they're better and they'll deliver them to you in availability. We can accept whatever we want, but.
That's who we use.
That's who we use. And I think that's where, even though it's more, a little more expensive than the Dubois, I think it's a better blade and they deliver them right to you.
So quality.
Quality and availability.
Quality and availability.
I move we accept the greater blades, yellow house.
I'll say it again.
All in favor? Aye. Hot mid asphalt.
Sorry, I didn't take off your ones from my shirt.
I've got all come marked on yet.
What's your reason?
Uh, location.
Location, so, okay.
Yeah. You don't, you don't wanna drive to Clinton and get it or somewhere.
Circle S is it?
It'll be a circle S is in Kansas, actually. And if, and our rules say that if you at all possible can take it within your state, you need to. I just read it again.
Are you going to accept type D with circle S being the only one?
Um, we can do that. We, I don't, I've never used it. I don't know whether you guys have.
Take it off there instead then?
Well, I know on the coal mix, uh.
Uh, you've gotta go to Logan County.
Yeah.
That's the only.
Yeah. Well, they got Clinton, but.
Yeah, but.
It set up on us. The one, Logan was the one.
Yeah, yeah.
So we're gonna take Logan?
Yeah, Logan County and, and on the coal mix.
What about the Millions? You guys still go with Cummins on them?
Yeah, it's a Cummins.
I've got Cummins marked on there.
So the circle S Cummins didn't bid that, so they're only.
Yeah, I put it only on.
So Jay, if you make the motion, then we don't have to change the.
Do what?
I didn't take it off the last time. Sorry, we watched.
Oh, I knew.
I second.
That a boy loser. All in favor?
That's a good motion.
I'm gonna tell you though, I hadn't noticed that. Private property easement for fifty two.
There's two copies up there. Can you just give Stan one back?
So I guess on this, the whole, overall, do we need to make?
No, we just have the other little ones, so, yeah.
I'll make the motion on this.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. New fund for court cart, for court cart preparation fund, seventy two, damn.
This is a new fund and I had asked Tammy about it before November. She forgot it, I forgot it. But when they appropriated it in last month, they have their hundred dollars. So we have to. So, we have to set up this new fund. Um, we're not gonna set it up in my office right now until they actually get ready to spend it, and then we'll make a new fund. So, this is just gonna be a new fund for Valerie's office, so she can appropriate that a hundred dollars a month in, but it's gonna take them a while before they, that's what, um, Sherri Schiffer with O S U Extension, she says, don't worry about coding it until, you know, she's getting ready to come. So, we're not gonna do anything in the office. You guys will just sign down there below the date. If you approve it, but any new funds established, uh, go through you guys. Their example is seventy-two ten for Valerie.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor? All right. Resolution for two thousand and twenty state being.
I just did the same thing, um, twenty-five dollar, or excuse me, fifty dollars per meeting. If they attend all four of them, then I get that additional fifty dollars for a total of fifty.
I move we accept it.
Sorry, get it.
All in favor?
Nope, that's yours.
Oh, okay, got you.
Tractor taking a view for secure extension facility, all for December of two thousand and nineteen.
This is just December.
Now, what do we do?
Just, you're right there, we're here.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
I see that.
Oh, where did it go? I didn't even look.
Oh, there's Garfield, Garfield, Garfield. Certainly, they don't have any vehicles around in Garfield County, so they don't.
Just stay.
I move we accept it.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Any other same bid?
I move with you.
Oh. Second.
God, I have to hurry. Have to do that before the minutes are over.
Okay, so, we're not going to, or we are going to, on the concrete for next week.
I'll call Bruce and find out.
Then I post that agenda today, because I'm gonna go out.
If, uh.
West, the county clerk at Harper County should retire.
You might put it on there for Monday.
Yeah, I'm putting it on, if we have to table.